There we go. Come to order, please. The March 17th, 2014 Session of County Commission. Come to order. Call, throw.
Peter Peters.
Here.
Willie Campbell.
Here.
Lawrence Hocke.
Here.
Nancy Brown.
Here.
Doral Streese.
Present.
Richard Wears. Ronnie Trickett.
Ah.
Harry Sees.
Present.
Charles Long Cannon.
Present.
Elsie Test. Sue Grant.
Present.
Sean Bowers.
Here.
Joanne Lincoln Chip.
Present.
Charlie Bacon. Bobby Giddy.
Present.
Ian Arnie.
Here.
Steve James.
Here.
John Lee.
Here.
Sonia Coles.
Present.
Russell Pott.
Here.
Scott Sam.
Here.
Jill Armstrong.
Here.
Matt Heed.
Present.
Robert Gollum.
Here.
We do have a form, and I'd like to state this for the record, that Mr. Winters called some few months ago and said he was going to be with him, he had a logging accident, he hurt his back, he was on his way to V A, and Mr. Tester called me, his mother is in real serious condition, he may pass away, so remember them in prayer. Now for our opening prayer, Mr. Campbell, please.
Dear God, in the name of our heads today, Lord, in the presence of your grace, we're thanking you for this day that you've given us, Lord, give us good health, Lord, be back on our feet this morning, give us a good night's rest, Lord. God, we pray to thee, Lord, for Mr. Tester, Lord, he's one order sick this morning, Lord, within this body. What we pray this morning for you, Lord, in basketball, thanks, Lord, for travel, God, we pray you have your grace on them. Lord, this morning we do thank you, Lord, for each thing that you do for us. God, we do pray, Lord, for our country, our men, and when, Lord, they're overseas, God, we pray, Lord, they'll come back safely, in your grace. What we know in 2 Corinthians 14 says, "My people, which are called in my name, shall humble themselves and pray, turn to their weak and place, and will they heal their land." Lord, this morning we pray that, Lord. God, we do pray for this commission body, Lord. Lord, we pray that we make the right decisions, Lord, by your wisdom and your knowledge and your strength. God, this morning we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Please. And. Blessed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'd like to recognize our elected and appointed officials and guests. If God stands, please. At this time, we have some presentation of flags. The mayor will present those at this time.
On Saturday, March the 8th, the Elizabethan Ladies Cyclones made history, and they were the first ever Cry City's area team to take the girls' state basketball title. They accomplished this by finishing the season with a record 32 to 8, not losing a single game all season to a class double eighteen. Furthermore, it was the first major sporting state championship for Elizabethan since the 1938 football team, and is noted as the fifth state basketball championship for Carter County. These young ladies worked tirelessly and seemed to be in total unison. Their collective efforts turned a dream into a reality. Senior Sarah Bradley put things in proper perspective when she said, "We give all the glory to God, we pray a lot every step of the way, we stay here." What a testament and shining example this is for all of us to emulate in our daily lives. Our future lies within our youth, thus our future here in Carter County looks extremely bright. Ladies Cyclones, you have made all of Carter County proud. Please help me welcome Coach Lindauer and the Ladies Cyclones.
Okay, I don't need a microphone, I've got too big of a mouth. First of all, on behalf of Ladies Cyclones, we'd like to thank Mayor Humphrey and the Commission on giving us this honor, giving us this opportunity to come and be with y'all. You know, it's just, it's just a great feeling, it's a great group of kids. They've, they've worked extremely hard, they've been very committed, dedicated, but they've been just like one big family. And several times throughout the season, I would tell reporters and different people, they played with one heart, one heartbeat, it's just like they're all together. I've never been around a group that has played so hard and didn't care who got the glory, you know, they just are their minimal teammates, one another. And they have represented our school, our community, Carter County, very best that they possibly could, and I'm so proud of them, I get choked up every time I start talking about, you know, we just, we want to thank everyone. This group, this team accomplished what they accomplished, but it's for everyone. This is for Carter County, this is for Elizabethan, this is for East Tennessee. And on a personal note, every kid that I've ever been associated with, boy or girl, this is for them also. I told you I don't give it real well, I get to talk about this group, because they do too much to mean their suspicion. And they have committed themselves and dedicated themselves to going out at the beginning of the season, they did what they wanted to try to accomplish, and they did a tremendous job of doing it. And they didn't blink it out when we got to Murphysburg. We, we had a little saying, "Why not us?" And, and we really believed that, we've been there on some other occasions, didn't quite get it done, we're close, but this group was about why not us? I know Coach Bayless has, has had that feeling, he knows all about it.
Great feeling.
There's some other, some other people in the audience right now that have been closely connected with the Hampton Bulldogs, the Yankee Rangers, the Happy Valley Warriors, and you know, it's just a great feeling. Now it's Elizabethan Cyclones, and as I said, this is for everyone in the whole area, we want everyone to share this, and it's a very special, special. I feel blessed to have the opportunity to work with this group, very blessed. And we pray for some special blessings. And I really feel that God gave us special blessings, I feel like his hand within this all the way. I'd like to thank Mr. Alexander, his staff, I'd like to thank Mr. Wright, the administration at the high school, for being so supportive, and just, you know, it's been an unbelievable year, the sport that we've had, and Mr. Wright and the staff at the high school have just been tremendous. I'd like to say something, I'd like to thank his athletic director, Mike Wilson, who is very special to our program, to all the programs at Elizabethan High School, that he does a tremendous job, and works a lot, really, in the south. And I'd also like to thank Eddie Litz, a very special one. And if I'm leaving someone out, I apologize, I just want to thank you. I'm, I'm very humble, appreciative, thank God. So, I'll, I'll try to introduce this group, I'll quit, I'll start over to the end over here, I gotta look at them. They're not quite awake this morning, the first one is Kelsey Marisites, and she looks very similar to her twin sister, next, Kayla Marisites, Melinda Perry, Sarah Bradley, just hold your hand up when I call you that. Sarah is our only senior, Sarah Bradley probably didn't get the accolades that she deserved, but everybody, everybody knew that without her, excuse me, this wouldn't have been possible. She's been a tremendous leader, and she has just tucked everybody under her wing, just done a tremendous job. Next to Sarah Robinson, Kyra McCrery, Allison Williams, Lauren Campbell, Linda Espino, Haley Berlison, Caitlin Gardner, Autumn Lyon, Ashley DePue, Brittany Campbell, Emily Schubert, Megan Petrowski, let me get out of the way, Bailey Montgomery, and Emily Pauser, Coach Russ Lyon, the first year with us, we're missing, he's sick today, called yesterday, was pretty sick. Coach Richard Hyder, who just has done a tremendous amount of work with this group, and these girls know how vital and important these assistant coaches are in the throbs of state duty. And Coach Hyder's had, he's had that distinct blessing of not only playing on the state championship team at Hampton with Coach Van Does, but now he's coached state championship team with Elizabethan. I personally really appreciate Coach Lyon, Coach Hyder, the work they do, and they've done it all year long, they're just special men that really care and love these kids. And I appreciate all of you, thank you.
Mayor Sarah.
All right, right, okay, I'll count to three, one, two, three. Let's do one more, count to three, one, two, three. Y'all, one more thing to say, I'll shut up. Your director of schools, where are you, Carter County? Do you, you better be quiet. I started out with him as a player, and we won't go back and ask me, but it's been ten or fifteen years ago anyway, but he was a special young man a long time ago. Bring it back to your next chair.
They made us all proud, you know, great job, Ladies Cyclones. On April 9th, 2013, the first ever Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service, United mayors across the country to spotlight the impact of national service and honor those who serve. Altogether, eight hundred and thirty-two mayors in all fifty states. The District of Columbia, Guam, and Puerto Rico officially recognize the work that AmeriCorps members and senior corps volunteers are doing to make local communities better and stronger. Together, these mayors represent nearly one hundred million citizens, or nearly one-third of all Americans. This year, I have chosen to participate and issue the following proclamation. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet local needs, and whereas participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities, counties, states, and nation, from educating students for jobs in the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters, and whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas national service participants serve in more than sixty thousand locations across the country, including seven service locations in Carter County, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our county's economic and social well-being. And whereas more than ninety-five national service participants of all ages and backgrounds serve in Carter County, providing vital support to county residents and improving the quality of life in our county. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayers' dollars, including more than $275,941 of leveraged resources in Carter County. And whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, City of Servicing, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 1st, 2014. Therefore, be it resolved, I, Leon Humphrey, Mayor of Carter County, do hereby proclaim April 1st, 2014 as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our county, and thank those who serve, and find ways to give back to their community. Today, we have with us an individual that has faithfully served a great number of citizens in the Hunter community. In April of 2002, his wife, Lula, introduced him to the meal delivery program. Initially, he assisted her with the delivery, and now fourteen years after the fact, is still going strong as a retired senior volunteer. This tremendous level of commitment for neighbors and community must not go without recognition. Please help me welcome Mr. Frank Childers.
Mr. Childers.
Mr. Childers, I want to really thank you for all your years of service, twelve-plus years, for those people in the Hunter community, we really appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Also, we have with us today Ms. Ruth Phillips, who's the Director of Senior Program here locally. Would you come up as well?
On behalf of all the volunteered, the state of Tennessee, I would say, they all did a good job.
Again, in order to do this, he has to have the support of his family, so Ms. Childers is with us today, Amber June, Police Fan, and all the other family members. The level of education available within an area is without a doubt the single most important factor affecting the overall quality of life in a community. Accomplished educators are the most essential and key elements of true success. Today, we have with us one such individual. She received a Bachelor of Science in Nursing from East Tennessee State University, and a Master of Science degree in Technical and Adult Education from the University of Tennessee. As a board member of the Tennessee Center for Nursing, she served as president in 2007, and also served as a member of the Tennessee Nursing Association. These are just two of the twenty-plus committees, boards, and consortiums that she has faithfully devoted her time to helping the people in Carter, Sullivan, Washington Counties, and all of East Tennessee. From 1982 to 85, she served as charge nurse at Carter County Memorial Hospital. From 1985 to 2014, served as practical nursing director at Tennessee Technology Center, Elizabeth. Nineteen ninety to present, worked as a reviewer and contributor for various nursing textbooks, as well as, from 2008 to present, faculty and developer of the region's online reprogram. This resume has absolutely raised the bar on to an exceptionally high level for all those that follow thereafter. Carter County has been extremely fortunate in having a person of this caliber engaging, mentoring, and advancing our youth over the past thirty years. Please help me welcome Terry Blazins. Terry, this is just a small tribute for our appreciation for your fervent dedication to you, Carter County. We will leave you there.
Thank you, Mayor Humphrey. I would not, I would be very remiss if I did not give credit to anything that was ever good to the Lord, because he has been there every step, and we didn't know what to do, and he did. I think my parents, because they made the way for me to go to school, and kept my child, and then my husband, who was always supportive of my job, and traveled with me, and helped me every step. Thank you.
To extend upon that, Terry does have with her mother and father today, her husband and her son, Police Fan, without you, it would have been very difficult. Thank you. Whereas, April is the month in which the people of the Confederate States of America began and ended a four-year heroic struggle for states' rights, individual freedom, local government control, and determined struggle for deeply held benefits. And whereas Carter County supplied citizens, soldiers, and officers who fought for their beliefs in this great struggle, and whereas Carter County, Tennessee, has long recognized her Confederate history, the officers and enlisted men of the Confederate State Army and the Navy, and those at home who made sacrifices on behalf of their families, homes, communities, and families, and that is just right to do so. And whereas the noble spirit and inspiring leadership of these great officers, leaders, and the ordinary men and women, free and not free, of the Confederate States, is an integral part of the history of all of America. And whereas it is important for all citizens of Carter County to reflect upon our past and to respect the devotion of her Confederate leaders, soldiers, and citizens to the cause of Southern liberty. And whereas Carter County, Tennessee, is proud to recognize and celebrate the devotion of her Confederate soldiers and all those from Carter County who fought and sacrificed in this great struggle that divided families, the nation, and our state. And whereas the knowledge of the role of the Confederate States of America and the history of our nation and our state is vital to understanding who we are and what we are. And whereas we honor our past, and from it draw the courage, strength, and wisdom to reconcile ourselves and go forward into the future together as citizens of Carter County, Tennesseans, and Americans. Now therefore, I, Leon Humphrey, Mayor of Carter County, on the seventeenth day of March, do hereby recognize the month of April as Confederate History Inherited Month in Carter County, Tennessee, and urge all citizens of the county to engage in a historical study of the events during the years of 1861 to 1865, inclusive, and to solemnly contemplate that time in our history, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. With that, I would With that, I would like to present a framed proclamation to Bill Hicks, a member of the Sons of Confederate Veterans, Lieutenant Robert J. Timpin, Camp Number 283, here on Elizabeth.
Thank you, Mayor Humphrey, Carter County Commission. I stand here again this year and look at the proclamation on behalf of Lieutenant Timpin, Camp. We have several of our camp members here today. Carl Jenkins, dressed as Confederate Major, forty-two-year veteran, retired schoolteacher of the Carter County School System, excuse me, fellow of the Tennessee School System. Companion Scott Bowers, I believe you know, you know Scott. He is a camp member and in good standing now. On April 25, 1906, General Stephen Del Lee of the United Confederate addressed a group of the United Confederate veterans. He left us with what is known as the charge. I would like to read that charge this morning. "To you, sons of Confederate veterans, we will commit the vindication of the cause for which we fought. To your strength will be given the defense of the Confederate soldier's good name, the guardianship of his history, the emulation of his virtues, the perpetuation of those principles which he loved and which you love also, and those ideals which make him glorious and which you also cherish. Remember, it is your duty to see that the true history of the South is presented to future generations." Mayor Humphrey, Carter County Commission, we have kept the charge this morning. We thank you very much for the proclamation. It's very humbly accepted. God bless Carter County. God bless Tennessee. God bless Dixon. God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one more plaque to be presented that's on the agenda today. However, due to some scheduling problems, those individuals couldn't make it today. It will be to the Carter County Constable Association for Outstanding Performance and Dedicated Service to their community in Carter Camp. We will wait until more of those folks can be here to accept this plaque. They've done outstanding job and performed a lot of work at no charge to the camp. We will be more appreciative of them and we'll present this at our next meeting. Now we'll go to public comments. If anybody would like to address anything that's on the agenda today, they can come to the podium. Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on. We'll have the acceptance of minutes from our previous meeting. From Mr. Lewis, I have a second.
I'll say it.
From Mr. Crisp. Any discussion? Mr. Rockham.
I apologize, but I have to make one comment and ask County Attorney Bowers about the new death form required by the Tennessee Health Department of Health. I've been seeing, being sickly lately, and I want to know what this sort of looks like before I pass. The new death form, is that available?
I can get you a copy of it. It's something the mayor and I have worked on. It's something that's urban implements in neighboring counties. We may have some exemptions because of the length of time we've had a coroner. It's a pretty intense project. I'll be glad to give you copies of everything I've got on it. Good luck.
Thank you. Go to the county and bury it.
If you'll hurry, I'll make that motion. We have a motion, I'm saying, to accept the minutes. I'm in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Numbers in the box.
Teresa Craig, Yerick Edwards, Miss Lawton, Trina Whitey, Stuart E. Wood, Carol Hall, Iceman, Stacey, Mr. Diana, Evelyn Duggar, Douglas Brennan, Aaron, Jay, Hazel, Fifila, and Holly.
I should just bring a second.
Mr. Keller, through second by Mr. Brandt. Do I have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? If you care. Mayor Humphrey, you have a report.
Tennessee Code Annotated 7-82-307, Commissioners' Numbers, Terms, Vacancies. Election of Commissioners, Section Four. Vacancies on the Board of Commissioners shall be filled by appointment of the county mayor within sixty days after the occurrence of a vacancy in the office of any commissioner caused by death, resignation, disability, or forfeiture of office, and no later than thirty days prior to the expiration of the term of office of any incumbent commissioner. The Board of Commissioners, for its remaining members, shall select three nominees to fill such office, in full accordance with any residential requirements that may apply to the office vacated or to be vacated. And under the seal of the Board of Commissioners shall certify such list of nominees in order of preference recommended by such commissioners to the county mayor, the county in which the utility district or its principal office is located, or of the county in which the commissioners customarily meet if the district has no principal office. Within twenty-one days after the issuance of certification by the Board of Commissioners to the county mayor, the county mayor may enter an order either appointing one of the nominees or rejecting the entire list, or may refrain from taking any action, in which the first name on the list of nominees shall be deemed appointed to fill the vacancy or new term by operation law. Any order either appointing one of the nominees or rejecting a list of nominees shall be entered off record on the minutes of the county legislative body, and a certified copy of the order shall be furnished to the Board of Commissioners and to the appointee. First, Ms. Linda Guy, Office Manager of Hampton Utility District, advanced correspondence to me on February 20th to advise that Mr. Richard Tester's term will expire on May 8, 2014. enclosed therein was a certified list of nominees for consideration in filling that vacancy. There's a copy of said list in your packet. The first name on the list is that of Mr. Richard Tester. Per the provision to the statute, Mr. Tester is reappointed to the Board. Madam Clerk, please let the minutes reflect said appointment. Also, each of you were provided a copy of correspondence submitted by South Elizabethan Utility District, which was dated February 19. Therein, it was noted that Mr. Olling-Pate's term expires on March 31, 2014. Mr. Pate's name is first on the list, therefore, Mr. Pate is reappointed to the Board. Madam Clerk, please let the minutes reflect this appointment.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question right now?
Yes, sir.
We have a lot of discouraging over the years out these of corporate and these utility boards. Now personally, I would be proud for these that are members of the court wanting to call these back, and that's what we do at all times. So I think it's up to we as commissioners, we need to do something about this. Well, see, right now, the public don't have no input in nothing. They're going who they want, and they're going to get one back in there, and a long time to frame things, and I do think that we need to get started on this and try to get the State of Tennessee or somebody to change it. But see, just that, that needs to happen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I understand your concern. Again, this is a matter that the General Assembly would need to address, so I would suggest that you contact the representative and see if you can get him to take some action about trying to follow letters and statute as they are present. Tennessee Code Annotated 7-87-105B1, except as otherwise provided by law, an emergency communication district shall have a Board of Directors composed of no fewer than seven nor more than nine members to govern the affairs of the district. For districts created by county legislative body, the county mayor shall appoint the members of the Board of Directors subject to confirmation by the county legislative body. In each of your packets is a copy of correspondence dated February 24, 2014, as submitted by 911 Director Dale Blevins. Therein, he provided a resume for consideration in filling the current Board vacancy. The Board candidate of choice is Ms. Melanie Stanton. I have reviewed the resume and feel that Ms. Stanton's professional experience would bring a totally new perspective to the Board, one which would complement the overall performance and operations thereof. Therefore, Mr. Chairman, a motion would now be in order to confirm Melanie Stanton's appointment to fill the vacancy on the Carter County Emergency Communications District, 911 Board of Directors.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if it's just my packet, but my packet did not contain a resume. I was going to think about yesterday's department.
Ms. Stanton is the Director of Nursing at Sycamore Chelves. She was in a position with the United States Air Alliance over in Johnson City prior to coming to Elizabethan. She grew up here in Carter County. She has a vested interest in Carter County.
Also to add to that, she does have a Bachelor of Business Administration with major in accounting and minor in management from East Tennessee State University in 1991. She has a Bachelor of Science in Nursing, where she was cum laude, 1995, from East Tennessee State University. She has a Master's of Business Administration from King University of Bristol in 2006. She's board certified, nurse executive advance, so her credentials are impeccable, and I would be glad to advance a copy of this resume to the commission if they so desire. I just don't see the need based on her credentials.
If this body feels that she is uniquely qualified to serve on the 911 Board, then yes, we will entertain a motion to accept her nomination.
I'll make a motion that we accept her 911 Board.
I'll say it.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Keller, to accept this nomination. Is there any other discussion? Call over.
Peter Peters.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Ronnie Cribbitt.
Aye.
Harry Seitz.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Kestner.
Steve Lorenz.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joan Lankenship.
Aye.
Charlie Bagley.
Aye.
Bobby Deed.
Aye.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Son Joe.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sam.
Aye.
Phil Armstrong.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Robert Kauf.
Aye.
All, if you care. Each of you received a copy of correspondence submitted by Mr. Richard Barker, Board Chairman Elizabethan, Carter County Public Library. Therein, he noted that the Board during its January meeting voted unanimously to recommend and request that this legislative body reappoint Mr. John Toleko as the county's representative to the Holston River Regional Library Board. The term for this appointment is three years and will expire April 2017. Thus, Mr. Chairman, a motion is now in order to appoint Mr. Toleko as the county's representative to the Holston River Regional Library Board.
I'd like to make a motion from Mr. Street.
Second.
By Mr. Rockham, to accept this nomination. Any discussion? Call over.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Cribbitt.
Aye.
Harry Seitz.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Kestner.
Aye.
Steve Lorenz.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joan Lankenship.
Aye.
Charlie Bagley.
Aye.
Bobby Deed.
Aye.
Ken Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Son Joe.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sam.
Aye.
Phil Armstrong.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Robert Kauf.
Aye.
All, if you care. Each of you received a copy of Mr. Bobby Huffman's letter of resignation as a judicial commissioner dated March 11, 2014. The effective date of the resignation is May 1, 2014. Mr. Huffman explained to me that he wanted to provide ample time for the commission to fill the vacancy and that his departure would not create an extreme workload or unnecessary hardship on his fellow commissioners. Thus, Mr. Chairman and Madam Clerk, if you would please, initiate an advertisement in that the position could be filled during the April meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Huffman also called me over the weekend and advised me of his retirement, and we will advertise and fill the vacancy at our next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Tennessee House Bill 1647, Senate Bill 1679, also referred to as Rule Bridge Act of 2014, initiated by State Representative Timmy B. Hill, passed the House on March 6 and the Senate on March 13. This bill changes the way the state currently manages its state aid bridge grant program. It will allow millions of funding set aside by the states now be used in the form of direct expenditures to upgrade, repair, and rehabilitate bridges that have fallen in disrepair over the years. Currently, in order to receive funding through the bridge grant program, a 20% local match must be made. However, because many local governments cannot afford the match, a large percentage of the bridge funding set aside by the state has not gone unused. Representative Hill's bill reduces the local match percentage to only 2%, ensuring that local governments can now afford and utilize these grant funds. Where Carter County is concerned, it will unlock 1.8, over $1.8 million. Furthermore, with the prior approval of the Commission of Transportation, the county's 2% match can be in kind, so we don't have to absolutely have that match in cash. These projects must be initiated no later than fiscal year 2015-16. Thus, time is of the utmost essence. I've already appeared before the Highway Committee and through a motion by Mr. Von Cannon, efforts are being made to get some of the T-Doc representatives here to work with the committee, so we appreciate the efforts there. We just cannot afford to allow this money to be used.
Budget Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Committee met on the March tenth, and some of the things that were voted on that evening. First item is a listing of donations made to the animal shelter. And you have that list in your packet, I believe, and make a motion to accept the donations totaling three hundred and ninety dollars for the animal shelter.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Mr. Hicks, to accept these donations to the animal shelter. Is there any discussion? Call her over, please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Ronnie Cribbitt.
Aye.
Harry Seitz.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Steve Lorenz. Tom Valers.
Aye.
Joanne Blankenship.
Aye.
Charlie Bayless.
Aye.
Bobby Deed.
Aye.
Ian Arnie.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonny Fuller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sam. Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Kat Hee.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All last motions carried.
Next item, Corporate Security Committee has recommended the installation of an external paging system. And so I make a motion as recommended by the Budget Committee to transfer up to six thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars eighty-six cents from the Corporate Security Reserve for the purchase of an external paging system.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Miss Keller, to transfer up to six thousand seven hundred and... ...state's third packet to use of an external paging system. Any discussion? Call her over, please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Ronnie Cribbitt.
Aye.
Harry Seitz.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor. Steve Lorenz.
Aye.
Tom Valers.
Aye.
Joanne Blankenship.
Aye.
Charlie Bayless.
Aye.
Bobby Deed.
Aye.
Ian Arnie.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonny Fuller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sam. Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Kat Hee.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All last motions carried.
Mr. Seitz.
Yes, sir.
We just voted for six thousand, uh, two six thousand, was it sixty-seven, or are you...
What we received were six thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight eighty-six, up to that amount.
Up to that amount, but I thought the motion was for up to six thousand.
Six thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-six cents.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we covered all of the areas.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Von Cannon.
Can I change my vote?
It's already been announced. I'm pretty much...
We've got a comfortable, we've got security here.
Mr. Sisk.
Six thousand dollars along the...
Okay, next item. Make a motion to approve General Fund One-on-One Amendment Number Six with eight items for a total of eight thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, zero coming from fund balance.
Motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Mr. Hodg to approve this amendment. Is there any other discussion on this? Then call her over.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown. Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Ronnie Cribbitt.
Aye.
Harry Seitz.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Steve Lorenz.
Aye.
Tom Valers.
Aye.
Joanne Blankenship.
Aye.
Charlie Bayless.
Aye.
Bobby Deed.
Aye.
Ian Arnie.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonny Fuller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sam.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Kat Hee. Robert Goff.
Aye.
All last motions carried.
Next item is make a motion to approve Federal Projects Fund One Forty-two Amendment Number Four, one item, total of nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, zero coming from fund balance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Miss Keller to approve this amendment, Amendment Number Four, one item, Federal Project One Forty-two, in the amount of nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Any discussion? Call her over, please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell. Lawrence Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Cal's having a court party and I have a conflict. It's an interesting proposal by people. However, I require my arguments above nature. I'll leave my calls into my own. Yes, to my constituents and citizens, as Bobby represents, I...
Ronnie Cribbitt.
Aye.
Harry Seitz.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Russell Testor, Steve Lorenz.
Aye.
Tom Valers.
Aye.
Joanne Blankenship.
Aye.
Charlie Bayless.
Aye.
Bobby Deed.
Aye.
Ian Arnie.
Have a conflict, please, double that.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonny Fuller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sam.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Kat Hee.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All last motions carried.
Okay, the next item. Board of Education recently put out a bid window renovations at Clavon High School, Kingburg Elementary, and Valley Forge Elementary. The list of the bid amounts is included in your packet. This project is done for us prior to obtaining board approval. It is very time sensitive. In order to complete this work before the start of school in August, make a motion to transfer six hundred and seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the referendum reserve for the completion of window renovations pending school board approval.
Second.
Mr. Chairman. Just a minute, Mr. Lewis. I have a motion for Mr. Sisk, second by Mr. Keller, to approve the transfer of six hundred and seven thousand dollars, six hundred and seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the referendum reserve to do these windows. Any discussion? Call her over.
I ask Mr. Long this question. I ask Mr. Henry Moore this question. Now, a few years ago, we put two million dollars back for a million dollars to the United States of America by piece of land. I think we give government to what it remodeled the school. I thought it was eight hundred something thousand dollars. Bad four million dollars, total be in the bank. You're a student, what happened to that million dollars?
There was a million dollars for land for Valley Forge area, and that land never was okay, but therefore that bond never was exercised. So you just wanted to do it, but the land never materialized, and therefore the bond expired. Is that correct?
That's correct. The money was sent back, Mr. Lewis, just like I told you last night.
And then we tapped into the use of the bond, therefore it's not there.
Well, a question here, if you're going to build a new school in the future, why put windows in your old schools then?
Well, there's, uh, there's certain districts that, you know, the old schools, uh, for example, Valley Forge, if there's everything down at the Valley Forge, then Valley Forge will serve a purpose. So that could win the renovation. The wind is all about it right now, you know, that very well.
Well, I don't got that, but I just want to, want to be there. In the future, you're going to build a new school, are you? In the future, in the school. Yeah, we plan, in the future, to build a new school.
We have some contingency plans, but unless we could right now without having to think the hell down in terms of projects and location, you know, it's, it's, it's another conceptual stage. But whatever we do, in terms of whatever we present to the board, the board works out. You know, I think it's going to be a plan that will be cost savings and will save money, you know, in terms of such as just like with closure break.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Dr. Lewis, any other discussion?
Has those bids been opened yet on Madison?
They were open, and that's what this listing is. It was laid on your desk, and that's the true bid amounts. That's what this listing is.
It was a low bid.
Well, it was different for each one. Clavon High School was Preston Construction. Kingburg was Holman Construction, and Valley Forge was Holman Construction.
Any other discussion?
How much you say, Lewis, Mr. Chairman?
Six hundred and seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. That'd be Kingburg Elementary is two hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. Valley Forge Elementary is two hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. Clavon High Gym is fifty-six thousand four hundred, and the architect fee of thirty thousand dollars.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gordon, Dr. Gordon, pardon.
Hi. I'd address a question a little bit further, just in terms of...
If you like to, go ahead.
This referendum, I guess, has been, been available to us now for probably seven years or eight years. And I've said this before, and in fact, it, it was something that was voted on back when Mr. Williams left office, and the city under park would go to our share or our high cent. And I'll just be truthful with you, without this money, the half a cent that goes toward this, this accumulation of yearly monies that's allowed us to get our roofs completely updated, we have a few, maybe a couple sections right now, but not very large in, in dollar amounts. So our roofs are in good shape. We have an empty floor on those. We've redone and remodeled bathrooms. We have been on the window project for the last four, five years and slowly getting their windows up, up to date and upgraded. Because what we're replacing, of course, some of you know, is the single pane windows that has over years been replaced with plexiglass. So, you know, this, and the reason I say this is to give you an idea of how able this, this particular fund, this money on a yearly basis has been to the school system. But not just to the school system, but to the taxpayers of Carter County, because it's a countless roof renovations, countless window renovations, bathroom renovations, just to mention a few. So I think, I think it's, it's, it's very worthy in that it's each year providing money for us without us having to come to you all and ask for renovation monies. So it's, it's been a really good deal, you know, I think Carter County is a model for...
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Any other discussion? Mr. Von Cannon.
My question is very simple. This building was destined to be torn down at some time in the future. Why in the world would you spend six hundred and seven thousand dollars knowing that it's going to be demolished in a short period of time? This does not sound to me like responsibility that we as a commission should sanction. But, you know, we've done stupid things before.
Uh, Mr. Campbell, would you wish to say something?
Just like you were saying. It's state lottery money that used to come in. I don't understand how it's worked. So this state lottery money matching with repairs to the schools?
It has nothing to do with state lottery money. This is a sales tax money.
Okay, sales. Okay, I see what you're saying about...
Thank you. Ms. Blankenship.
I don't think this commission has entertained that the school board was going to demolish the Valley Forge school. I don't, I, I, in the community, I've not even heard that discussed.
You're correct, ma'am.
This six hundred, this is our amount is for three schools, not for one.
That's correct. And plus architect fees. Mr. Gordon.
Something Mr. Von Cannon said, they, you know, maybe in the future, they will consolidate and tear some of these schools down, but we're talking, you know, in different points of view, so... I would make that these windows go away here. We need to take care of...
Mr. Chambers.
We're thankful for every, everything I can get about the community. That's the same school that's good, that was our growing school there. They've been very, very thoughtful of keeping that school there. And the school is still in good shape. The tenants is still going up and down. It's only, the only change that's been through the year, K three late to K three five. And the school has been kept in good shape. We've still got good teachers there, and I would hope that that school, you know, if a time comes when there's a new school or whatever, that we continue to do the work on that school that we need to keep it going.
Thank you. Mr. Street. Uh, I, I would just like to direct this towards Dr. Gordon. My understanding that these new windows, Dr. Gordon, one of the reasons for those, they're more energy efficient, and that does help us on cost. Is that correct, sir?
Yeah. There's a, there's a payback. It's, uh, they're not going to pay for themselves in a, in a ten-year period, but there is definitely a payback. We've noticed at locations where we put in these new windows. They're definitely, it definitely helps to save on our, our utility bill. Now, one of the things that you got to keep in mind, if we were looking at a project where we had, let's say, for example, we could develop a project today and we call it a Phase One or a Phase Two or whatever, then that project would encompass certain locations, certain locations, maybe. It wouldn't address three quarters or, you know, the biggest part of the county. Now, it would be ten years, most likely, as our projects has been running on, on major, you know, on capital projects, before you could ever think about addressing another, another location. So therefore, you know, put these windows in and to say we're going to be tearing them out in three years, I don't think, that's not the way we're planning. When we put them in, we're expecting that there's going to, there will get a lot of return on the value. And then at the end of that value, if it's impacting a location that's desirable, it may be suited for, for assistance use. We've always thought about trying to, in the last few years, we've thought, talked about trying to do centralized purchasing. Maintenance is also housed in a, in a building that's really too small, and they manage and they make it to work. But it's, it's an old building that's, you know, it's been a long years on it. So if we ever had a school coming up and we had, we had the opportunity to use it for central purposes, then that's what we'd use it for. But I, I wouldn't want to put windows in anything or put a roof on anything that going to tear it down in the next ten years or fifteen years. So that's, that's what...
Okay.
Question, not motion. Call her over, please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Ronnie Cribbitt.
Aye.
Harry Seitz.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
No.
Elsie Testor. Steve Lorenz.
Aye.
Tom Valers.
Aye.
Joanne Blankenship.
Aye.
Charlie Bayless.
Aye.
Bobby Deed.
Aye.
Ian Arnie.
Have a conflict, please, double that.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonny Fuller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sam.
Hi.
Scott Sands.
Hi.
The Armstrongs.
Hi.
Matt Neese.
Hi.
Robert Goff.
Hi.
Mr. Von Cannon, make your vote.
Do you wish to change your vote?
No, I'm going to stick for my vote. I would like to use some bad language. May I, may I read my disclosure, sir? I forgot to do so.
You're a good idea.
Because I am employed for Carter County, I have conflict with the interest about the proposal, about to be voted, however I prefer to my argument, my vote in answer under my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens of this body, represents I.
One, no. Uh, motion carries. Uh, be all right, y'all. Can we, uh, recess for about five minutes? So moved.
And we're here from the, uh, financial management committee.
As I told you last month, uh, we had the, uh, policy of, uh, privacy practice under the federal law for protected health information. We had drafted that and sent it to the, uh, county attorney for his input. Uh, I asked for each of y'all to read over it and provide feedback. I received no feedback, except from the, uh, county attorney, who says that this needs his approval. We've tried to cover everything, including ikidai, uh, the information that, uh, they cannot trace it back to an individual. Uh, so I put this before you now for, in the motion of approval for this policy.
Second. A motion by Mr. Blackiship, second by Mr. Hicks, to approve of this policy. Is there any, uh, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
That's all.
Uh, landfill committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, fellow members of the mission. Just a few things I'd like to mention. Uh, Mr. Lyons has been working hard, and we had a young lady, uh, come to us and, uh, and ask us last year if we could possibly try to get recycling, uh, done at the Covens Bridge days. And, uh, we had such a late date last year, we talked with Danny Hilbert, uh, we were unable to con, uh, accomplish that, but this year, uh, she contacted myself, Mistress Kate Woods, uh, contacted myself and Director Lyons. We had a meeting with her, uh, then established another meeting with, uh, Sheriff Mathis, uh, Danny Hilbert. I was unable to attend that meeting, Director Lyons, and Miss Woods and her husband, Don Woods. And we are going to, uh, get that project done. We appreciate Sheriff's help. He's going to use some, some grant money to buy, buy some silence, so we appreciate that, and we're excited about that. And also, uh, Benny is trying to do the car show this year, try to recycle there. Uh, one thing that's, uh, that Benny, uh, Mayor Humphries, uh, are currently working on, uh, in the state of Tennessee, and Mr. Hicks done excellent job with our minutes covering this, is, uh, the state of Tennessee has changed the way that, uh, our money is going to be funded for, um, uh, our entire disposal. So, uh, Mayor Humphries doing research, making some research, and he's also asked C-Tas to get involved, help us make a, uh, better decision, so, uh, you know, we are collecting information on that. And, uh, I know that some people, uh, Benny brought up about the, uh, one of the trucks, uh, one of our maintenance equipment, uh, that's got over a million miles on it in our last landfill meeting, and at that time, we were really concerned that the engine could be, um, bad. Is Mr. Lyons still here? Uh, I would give, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I would like to, Benny, what was the cost on that repair?
Probably roughly twenty-five hundred dollars. Did, did it drop two injectors and use it, so, uh, we're replacing the injectors, hopefully I'll take care of what's going on.
Thank you, sir. But we were real concerned that, I wanted the committee to know that, that's, uh, you know, something that we can handle. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Street. Uh, you tell this committee. Uh, highway committee.
I just have one thing, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to mention, uh, Mr. Von Cannon, that our last meeting made a motion to, uh, invite all candidates for roofs superintendent to attend our next meeting, which will be on, uh, April fifteenth, uh, Tuesday. So, uh, I want to hand you that.
Thank you, Mr. Peter. Uh, law enforcement, uh, who overlooked? It's got to be somebody.
Me, but I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Street. I'm, I'm all right, overlooked you.
You got that on purpose.
If there's no other, uh, uh, committee reports, we'll have our county attorney.
I had one issue come up early with highway department, and met with, uh, Highway Hartman and Sheriff, as far as getting some blockages off of a private, off of a road, so that individuals get to in front of their home. I think that's something's been taken care of, and Sheriff's Department helped us, and I appreciate the Road Department being involved as well. Meeting went really well. Um, working on, um, teardown order on a, on a, uh, little violation through planning office, and I think they're getting it open the bids up through Miss Inger's department. Once that's done, we've already got, we will go back for it to drop, just to prove the cost of the teardown, and this will be something we do for the Valley Forge community, and it'll be tearing down a pretty bad structure there, and it'll be the third one we've done, second one this year. Um, working on a, the hub and spoke agreements, uh, planning with Mr. Street, and that's something we're working on for both the city of Elizabethan, uh, city of Otawa, and Carter County. We've got drafts, and I was ready, I've met with Attorney Roger Day, and let him know it's coming, and I made him a draft, just so he would know the nuts and bolts of what we're trying to accomplish. Um, I've advanced all documents to the attorneys, uh, in Nashville, and they have very good attorneys in this case. Concerned spread the law, the pilot agreement that's going on through industrial bond board, something the mayor and I have worked on together, and it's, it's the, for the purchase of the old Schaefer building, uh, by the company who currently, uh, is doing business there, and that's moving forward well. Uh, advanced a correspondence to all volunteer fire departments this month on water testing. It's something that come up through Washington County at one point, and it's something that's spread across the county. The mayor contacted me and asked me to get something out to the chiefs, the volunteer fire departments, uh, through Chief Shaw, as far as what is available through open records and what is not, on water testing and water pressures. Uh, there's actually exceptions, so you can protect any, uh, weaknesses in your water system. You don't want to pinpoint exactly where, if you start a fire, we couldn't fight the fire, that kind of thing, and, and it helps to protect our records as far as for the safety of the community. Uh, working on a pretty intense, and, and actually going to have a draft to the mayor this, uh, maybe not today, tomorrow, we talked about this last split, work on a mayor, a, a animal control resolution. We took a formation from two other counties, it's something they had accomplished, and it's, it's ultimately trying to get the citation power for animal control officers, so that if we have an animal control officer on site, they don't have to turn around and call for a sheriff's deputy command right citation, that, that power. Essentially saves us having two county employees on site to take care of an issue to having one county employee, which obviously long-term will be a tax savings and a, and a cost savings, and free up man hours for sheriff's department, to be more serious things, and things they're supposed to be into, where animal control handles a serious issue with the animal cruelty or things across it. Um, had a meeting with Attorney Roger Day, uh, just the other day, went over not the hub and spoke agreement as well, but also went over modifications needed in the animal shelter agreement between city and county, some of their auditors. It's very small, it's just, it's really just a tweak, and it's, it's nothing of substance, and I'll be advancing that to the mayor, and then advance that back to the full commission for this next meeting. Uh, did send a correspondence to, uh, Representative Williams, requesting an update on the private act that, that was prepared for the Parks and Rec Committee, make sure that gets through this year, so we can get that approved, as some Commissioner Peters has been working on, and, uh, that should pass through this, this term, from what I understand. Received a call from Senator Crowe's office, uh, worrying about the Hampton Utility Private Act, and I want to bring this, bring that up real quick, as Mr. Lewis had brought up the election of, uh, or the appointment of water commissioners. There's a private act that's progressing in legislature, I think, that's going to allow Hampton to have elections on their, uh, water commissioners. I did contact the commission, make sure they still wanted that to be passed through, so it might be something that comes for this full commission. If it does, it's something we'll probably have, want to have the water commissioners from Hampton come in, speak to us before we address it, and make sure it's something they still want, but it is progressing through, and Senator Crowe's office is handling that. We worked on a project for Happy Valley Baseball Field, was Commissioner Cutt, and getting some gravel down and getting some, uh, maintenance done to a road that was just pretty rough, to a really nice facility, and a really nice ball field, but a really rough road getting there. So it might be something through cooperation with the county and highway department we can work out and, and complete, uh, hopefully before the season's over. Completed, advanced documents to, uh, NCI, or Robertson Seco is our corporate part, our corporate name, uh, for completion of a project that we've been working on for quite some time. We've got those in their hands. We need a partial release from their lenders on around one acre of land, will then allow us to complete a road project that'll open up road for both sides of industrial parks. It's, it's a good long-term project for everybody involved. We did receive a new lawsuit, and it's, it's, it's back to the Minton lawsuit, that was now filed in federal court requesting damages against the Beer Board. The carrier has picked that up, as they represented us originally. We'll be teeing up a motion to dismiss pretty quickly. Uh, it's our position and my position, and Attorney Jeff Horst's position, almost all the claim is barred by statute at this point. Uh, they've just waited too long. There might be one that survives, but it's a pretty weak claim, and I, we never shut them down, so they've, they've got a pretty weak claim for damages, but, uh, Attorney Ward, if it gets a little bit following in the progression, I'll have him come in and speak like we did a few months ago. It's good to get directed from him. And then finally, a pretty important issue, um, uh, the Harris case, which was a death in the facility, in our jail facility. Uh, we received some additional documents, both the mayor's office, uh, several sets of documents on service, and it's the attorneys for the plaintiff trying to fix what we feel some errors they made in their, in their calculation of statute, and we, we have a motion to dismiss pending, and we truly believe we'll get the county out of that case, based on our next hearing, that's in federal court.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Browers. Uh, now, to our, uh...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Browers, in the way it's been said, what is the status of Ritter Town Bridge again?
We just got the deeds back in, signed.
Just got the deed signed?
Just got the deed signed.
Everything's ready?
The, the question, I would like to sit down with the mayor, if this new bill is perhaps, it might be a situation that the current, the match could be so much lower, I want to see the progression of that bill before we... We, we did get the deed back signed in just the other day, but I want to talk to the mayor, make sure before we move forward that we don't, where we're on that match, because I want a much higher match until Representative Hill's bill goes through. So give me a day or two, and we'll meet, maybe later this week, but I want to make sure we do it.
So we're going to get that bridge down and build it.
We're, we're moving now.
Thank you, Mr. Browers.
Yes, sir.
Any other, Commissioner Cummins. Mistress Cut.
I'd like to thank Mr. Bowles for helping to get me down to High School. It was a baseball park. He asked it done more than I thought about, uh, I appreciate the work. Appreciate you getting it done. They haven't been one, both grounds already hauled, and I think they've done some great work, too. And I appreciate your help, Charlie.
Thank you.
Mr. Von Cannon.
As usual, I rise to the front. The use of the term stupid decisions, I would obviously have talked about a commission several years ago, and not this austere group. In case of the, in the bridge situation you were talking about, Ritter Town, the, this is something that you know that I've had some passion for for several years. It drops out from under you, you could get hurt. But the bill is none of hands, I understand, of the governor. It passed ninety-seven to zero in the House. It passed the Senate fairly handily. The only thing that I see about that whole situation was, as it was originally written, it only addressed counties that were distressed counties, or counties that didn't have a lot of money. Somewhere along the way, it got amended to, uh, it got amended to include all counties. Believe me, we better get quick, because those counties that have money will be after, as you know. Therefore, I would say that, that our county, Mayor, our county attorney, coupled with the state bridge people, add them all and others, as soon as possible, try, try to establish which bridge, or bridges, that we might address, uh, and try and rebuild the bridge. This is the opportunity that will last, because two percent is a big difference than twenty percent. Even if, if as the mayor indicated, that some of that might be encountered, therefore you've got an even better deal. Uh, since it includes all ninety-five counties, you're going to rest assured that these big counties, with grant riders and whatever, they're going to be after that money. Therefore, I would, of course, can't make a motion at this stage of time, but we can say, we need to be ready. Whether we get any money or not, we still need to be ready. We need to know which bridge, based upon school bus route, based upon traffic count, based upon accidents at the bridge, whatever criteria is necessary to establish which bridge in this county needs to replace or which stupid. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Von Cannon. Mr. Lorant.
Continuing with what, uh, Mr. Von Cannon was talking about, I'd just like to go on record to make, uh, to deal with, uh, the bill that you set that very carefully forward. Uh, there have been one, approximately one point nine million dollars appropriated for Carter County to build bridges. You know, that, that sounds like a lot of money. If you give me one point, two, eight, one point nine million dollars, that turned heart well, and that's a parking lot. But unfortunately, one point nine million dollars is not all by law. Yeah, when you look at bridges, for instance, the, uh, uh, the, the Siam Bridge was cost approximately two million dollars, the Lynn Avenue Bridge was approximately like eight million dollars, you know, in ballpark. The Elk River Bridge, uh, was somewhere around seven hundred thousand dollars. I'm not sure the Oak River Bridge at Long Mountain, the cost of that. But we've got perfect opportunity to get one major bridge, such as a smaller bridge, or maybe two small bridges. Now, the state is once, will make that determination on this. The state will determine what bridge gets fixed, and they will fix it, but I'm glad we'll get something out of this. There's a lot of counties, you know, bridges is not, Carter County's not the only county with bridge problems. Uh, Johnson County's hurting as well. Uh, a lot of counties are in worse shape than we are. Uh, thanks to the, the good leadership we've had in Nashville for the past few years, our roads and bridges are better than most. Uh, thanks to Timothy Hill, we have a good shot at, uh, getting a bridge or two done. Uh, thanks to Ralph Cole, we've got a new highway on Stony Creek, we've got the Long Hopper Bridge, we've got the Check and Taller Bridge, and thanks to Kent Williams, we got the, uh, we got the bridge on Lynn Avenue, Siam Bridge, Elk River Bridge, and the Oak River Bridge, uh, not counting, uh, all the guardrails that he's put up in this county, including the one down at Oakmont, and, uh, the gap rate road project. So we're better off than most counties. And then let's say it's not just a county-wide, it's statewide problem, and it's a nationwide problem. Like I say, I just want to thank, uh, Timothy Hill for doing this, and we do, you need to get with the state man and get this on, get this on board.
Thank you, Mr. Lorant. Mr. Street.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as long as you want, Mr. Lorant, Mr. Von Cannon said, uh, you know, one of the most important parties in all of this is our highway, our Carter County Highway Department. Mr. Perkins and the very capable Assistant Director Shannon, uh, you know, they should be heavily involved in all these decisions, and I would add that to the list of people that you said, Mr. Von Cannon, and I appreciate what, what you got here, Shannon.
Mr. Blackiship.
I don't know how many of the committee...
I don't know how many of the commissioners have spent an entire day in this courtroom, but I had the opportunity, I will call it that, to spend an entire day here. The temperature change in here for the people out there is very cold. And I'm sure if it's cold in the wintertime, it's very hot in the summertime. But our county clerk has to have a heater up there. I don't know if y'all are aware of it. It is so cold up there. In the wintertime, they have to have a heater in order to stay warm during our commission meetings. In the summertime, they have to run a fan up there to stay cool. So, we need something done. And I'm very, very concerned about the lack of security in this courthouse and especially in this courtroom.
Thank you, Ms. Blakenham. Any other, Mr. Cummins, Mr. Campbell.
Oh, the bridge is done, isn't it?
We talked about it. You know, we, you're saying you're going to call off the ropes of the town's evidence. You can say it. And then, Mr. Vaughn-Cannon said we need to get on this pretty quick. I remember back there just a couple years ago, it's like been too long, that Obama put out stimulus money for road projects and bridges. I don't think we had one done in our neighborhood. I think somebody sent back and didn't get that. We could have had money coming into this county. Revenues coming into this county.
We had a bridge to know for.
Well, that's what I'm saying, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Brown.
I'd just like to say, I'd like to tell everybody that I appreciate all the other schools that participated in the playoffs and stuff. And we had a team that really went far, and we had a young lady that got hurt and still having a struggle. And we appreciate that everybody paid for it. She's really having a whole time of it.
Who was this?
What is her name? Johnson. She's a Johnson. And she's had to go through therapy. They said she took her first day of the other day. She cried about her injury game.
Yes, she, she got hurt in the substate game at Cloudon. And, you know, the Cloudon now, who, who managed to speak enough is the Cloudon girls. Had a wonderful year. And of course, everybody knows that Hampton High School Bulldogs, you know, went to the semifinals. The team that beat them by, you know, thirteen points actually beat the next day won the state championship and won by twenty-nine. So we came up against some tough competition. But I, I, I appreciate that.
We're, we're very proud of all our kids.
Most of the jury, all in favor, say aye. Before you leave, before you leave, all of you, there will be no equal.